If you can't tell, I'm watching the clock. I'm a sales guy. I want to be prompt and on time. Okay, good evening, everybody. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Miles.
Present.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Wu.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rosini.
Here.
And Mayor Pitts.
Here.
All present.
So I would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. So if you would all stand, face the flag, hand over heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Todd, do you have an announcement to make?
Yeah, we did have a closed session beforehand, the matters on the agenda, and there's no reportable action. That is all.
Thank you, sir. The Villa Park City Council staff would like to welcome you to this meeting. We encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found outside the entrance to the city hall, council chambers. Speakers will be called in individually during the public comments section of the item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers will also be able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 P.M. today. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comments section of the item. So one of the things that we as council members do and be as mayor have a great opportunity to recognize longstanding citizens of the community and the contribution they make to our city. And I have the honor tonight to recognize one of our longstanding healthcare and community leaders here in Villa Park who has committed his lifetime to the health and enrichment of others through the work in the fields of non-animal test technologies and pharmaceuticals, in addition to caring for the maintenance and the character, I remind you, the character of the city of Villa Park. So I'd like to ask Rich Olmer to please come forward so we can pay tribute to him and his service to the community. So Rich and I sat down and talked a little bit about his past and growing up and so forth. And I guess it all started in a small Quaker town in Philadelphia where he spent 14 years at a Quaker school there educating. You can tell he has roots there because prior to the Super Bowl, when he came over to my house, he was head to toe in Philadelphia Eagles garb. But Rich, I'm sorry, buddy, better luck next time. So Rich came to the West Coast in 1967 as a result of a move to Allagand from Merkin Company. He looked around and settled in Huntington Beach. He worked 27 years and eventually became president of Allagand. Now and for the past 28 years, he is serving as CEO and Chairman of the Board at Invitro International, an OTC market, non-animal testing technologies company. Invitro is a pioneer in the development and application of proprietary non-animal testing alternatives for the determination of eye irritation, skin irritation, and skin toxicity. The company develops and markets non-animal assay tests and systems to detect, rank, and predict the potential level of urgency, toxicity, or corrosivity of substance to the human eye or to skin tissue. And you know, we sat there at the dinner table and talked, and he talked about some really phenomenal technology and things that they were working on and developing for us as individuals. And it's just absolutely amazing what's on the horizons from a healthcare perspective to help people. And maybe, Rich, you can elaborate a little bit, a little teeny bit on that tonight. But Rich has two adult children, Chris and Karen. He has three granddaughters and one great-granddaughter running around here somewhere tonight. He also has a younger sister. Most of you probably have seen and know Bev, his wife, who passed away recently. Rich met Bev and moved to Villa Park in 1990. Since then, he and Bev both were actively involved in our community. Bev in Women's League, in the library board, and Rich, of course, in our city government. He was elected twice to the city council, 2004 and 2008. He was mayor twice during his eight years and served as mayor during the city's 50th anniversary celebration. And I remember that great time. We had the play in the celebration at Villa Park High School that Rich was also a very big part of. Rich helped coordinate our last Fourth of July picnic event at Irvine Lake where we were able to have some of our last fabulous fireworks that we had at the lake that night. Rich helped to form a city council committee in Villa Park, which allowed two neighbors that disagreed with each other on various property issues, et cetera, to come together and be heard to solve their problems. Rich was instrumental in helping to increase cell coverage in our city. I don't know if any of you remember moving into the city and having spotty service, you know, in your home, and you know, you had to drive around with your cellphone hanging out the window and stuff like that. Well, as things improved, Rich had a lot to do with that improvement here in the city. Lastly, Rich and Bev were often seen by many walking the streets of Villa Park, picking up trash they spotted because they were so dedicated to the character of our city. Rich has stayed involved with the Villa Park Community Services Foundation for the past 18 years. So Rich, on behalf of all of Villa Park, I want to thank you for your many years of service to the community. And tonight, you are a distinguished citizen.
Counsel, any additional comments?
I would just like to say, it's been a pleasure knowing you. And we first met because, yes, when you and Bev used to, years ago, 20 years ago. So when you and Bev used to walk the streets, and my boys would hit all the baseballs or the basketballs over the wall. And they were little, so I'd always, you know, I'll get them later. And then miraculously, all of a sudden, they would appear back over our wall. And so it was, it took many years to figure out that it was you and Bev on your daily walks. And the boys thought it was like a miracle. All of a sudden, there's new balls in the yard. And so it wasn't until they were much older that I think when we introduced them, I said, and this is why all your balls got returned. So, thank you.
Well, Rich, would you like to address the city and tell us a little bit more? Did I leave anything out that you'd like to talk a little bit about for a couple of minutes?
Robbie, thank you. I would love to first let me thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and the Lord above. Because without them leading me in this life, none of the blessings would have come this way, I feel sure. And one of the blessings, many of them, is living in Villa Park. And it took me a lot of years to get here, from 67 to 1990. But it was a joy, being admiring those from Villa Park and then being one of them. So thank you, Mayor Pitts, and to the rest of the council. I appreciate the honor tonight, this evening. I'd be remiss if I didn't also, when here, mention several Villa Park names from the past and present. And I want to thank them just as much as anyone else in this city. At the top of that list for me is, I guess, the All Villa Park Team Award goes to Jill and Dennis Couli. It's been my extreme pleasure to know this family and to get to know Jill up close and personal. She's everywhere, ubiquitous. The multiple decades of Dennis being a treasurer are dwarfed by how many decades Jill has served in the various ways she has. She's been involved with the schools, mindfully. It was her profession, I believe. She's the publication expert, the publicity expert, as far as I know, whether it's Internet or the Villa Park magazine. The foundation, she's been on it almost as long as I have, maybe longer. I met her other son there first, when he was the head of the foundation. I'll mention Mark in a minute. But she's just a pillar of strength in this community. She gets grants for the foundation. And as I said earlier, Mark is here now. He's on the foundation and dominated our first meeting with wonderful contributions the other night. So just a wonderful family. The activity she led me to, along with a woman named Pat Bordel, who was, I believe, the second female mayor in Villa Park, was just something I'll never forget. Because if you mentioned politics to me, I didn't want to do that. But these folks convinced me I would make a contribution, and that was more important. So I joined, I got elected, good Lord willing, and creeks didn't rise. And that helped me to meet people along the way, such as Jim Christensen. He was already mentioned by Robbie tonight. When it was 50th celebration time, who emerged but the Christensen family with Jim literally leading the parade in Jill's place. And he took us to the high school. We did a play with probably, I don't know, 50, what would you say, Robbie? 50 Villa Parkans, singing, dancing, doing all kinds of wonderful things at the Villa Park High School. And it was very, very special to be blessed with that position where I could look to the Women's League. I mean, it just, everybody pitched in. Tremendous group of folks. So the 50th celebration wound up actually in the Nixon Library, which was a really one-of-a-kind thing. I think we had 300 and some odd attendees that night, and it wasn't cheap to get in. Of course, Villa Park wouldn't do anything cheap. It might have been inexpensive, but it was a good deal. I also met through the council, and I met a family called the Reese's. Brad Reese was volunteer fireman captain in Villa Park. And that's something that many of you don't even know existed, not you all probably, but many of the residents today. And so we were proud to have Brad Reese leading us as a mayor. In fact, he was mayor three times. I got to shake his hand the third time. I was off the council by then. I don't know how that, oh, I do know how that happened, actually. We can't talk about that. It has to do with the minority group. And, yeah. So anyway, I met Rick Barnett. That's a name probably not many in Villa Park, no. I'll excuse him for being a lawyer. He's an honorable person. And he brought the beautification concept from the Women's League to the entrances of Villa Park for the first time. And so our council approved all that he ever wished for and made this beautiful city the hidden jewel. It's not so hidden anymore. We have things at every corner that let you know that we're special in terms of a place to live. So Rick Barnett was a wonderful contributor. And then he introduced the entire city to what I'll call a military support for the United States of America. The Marines who come here at Thanksgiving now to our city are the result of Rick Barnett and his family being the instigator, if you will, of that wonderful thing. So I guess I want to share with you that my experience in government was way more than I could have ever hoped for. And it has lasted, gosh, what is it, 11 years this year? So I'll never forget most of these events that I've mentioned to you. And I want to use the last one to bring to you a plea. It's this event that I'll finish up with and ask this council to please consider a motion encouraging the foundation that you've created to think what I'll call out of the box. To me, that means considering conditions and causes in adjacent communities, not something in Tennessee, although someone, Pat, I think, told me what a great place that is. My son lives there too, by the way. But anyway, we need to take a look at needs outside the physical geographic boundaries of this city. We have plenty of money. We have wonderful contributors to the foundation each year. And we even did the Knowles top-off, if you will, on beautification to entrances to this city with the monies from the foundation, 70,000, something like that. And I mean, so we're not a bank. We look for something to spend on. We actually had something else targeted with that money that was a longer-term project. But when Knowles Park came along, we jumped in and said, we'll help with that. So the city and the foundation are partners. We're a 501(c)(3). You all are our bosses, and you approve everyone who comes in. But there's confusion on that group, in my opinion, relative to how much we have to spend and how much of all of that actually has to be spent within this geography. And I personally don't think that the city is full of people like that. I think it's full of people such as you who want to give yes to the city. But when you see something outside that's wrong, you're going to do something about it. And you're going to pass something in here, a motion of some kind, to register your protests. Well, in that same way, on the flip side of that, let's go outside this city once in a great while, because there have been at least one or two occasions where we haven't even considered going outside due to what they think is our charter. I should say we, because I'm on the foundation, and I'm just in the minority. But I would like you to take a look at that for me, please. And I can't thank you enough for the honor this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Rich, would you come up here, please? We have some additional things we'd like to provide you with.
I brought a jacket.
This is our distinguished citizens pin that we'd like you to have. And this is something that we did back when I was mayor before. But COVID came along. We wanted to pay tribute to all the past mayors and so forth that blessed our city. So this is for you, okay? And we hope you enjoy it. And we'd like to invite your family to come up and take a picture with all of us.
Robbie, don't forget us.
I'm waiting for you.
Oh, sorry. We were in the library.
Is she really all right?
She was cooking.
All right. So Rich, before you go, we have two other people that would like to pay tribute to you as well.
His person is warm.
So on behalf of the Congressmen, I just wanted to present you with a congressional certificate of recognition to mark you being distinguished as a member of February 2023.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
One, two.
Okay. Your turn.
I can hear you.
I know you can, but it's, I want to put it on the record. You're right. That's what I do want to do. Mainly because I had the honor of working for Southern California Edison when Rich was the mayor during those years. And it was always a pleasure to work with you. And I wanted to say that. And I loved Bev. And I was very sorry that you lost her. But this is from Orange County Supervisor Don Wagner. And he would like to tell you that, or thank you for your service on our city council, as well as for your dedication to the city of Villa Park. And he would be here except, he doesn't have his own time now that he's chairman of the board. He is everywhere. So we just want to say thank you for everything you've done in this wonderful city.
Thank you.
Now, I believe we have a visitor with us from the Southern California Gas Company who's coming to talk to us tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Let me get situated here.
A refund? Oh, just kidding. A refund?
Okay.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you. Clarissa Serpas, Public Affairs Manager for SoCalGas. First and foremost, I wanted to say congratulations to our newly electeds and reelecteds, and really thank you all for your commitment to public service. So I'm here tonight to give an update on SoCalGas's recent bills, as they have been historically higher than normal. So I do have some good news to share. As I was driving in, I got a text message that we just got another announcement as of today, that the market prices for natural gas continue to drop for a second month in a row, resulting in an 83% decrease for the month of March. So I do want to share that SoCalGas does not set the price for natural gas. Instead, these prices are determined by national and regional markets. Now, we purchase natural gas in those markets on behalf of residential and small business customers. And the cost of buying that gas is billed directly to the customers with no markup, meaning we do not profit from the movement of gas commodity prices. Additionally, the California Public Utilities Commission, or the CPUC, also accelerated the California Climate Credit. So customers should have received a credit of about $50 or so on their recent bills, or they will see it in the upcoming March bill. We've also delayed collection activities on overdue residential accounts, as well as non-residential disconnections. And we continue to inform and offer several ways to help income-qualified customers through our bill assistance, forgiveness programs, home improvement assistance, and the level pay programs. Now, yesterday, if you haven't heard, we also announced a commitment of $5 million to our gas assistance fund. And this is a program that targets income-qualified customers to help pay their natural gas bill. We'll also be focusing our efforts on relaunching our fueling our communities program. This is going to be in collaboration with local food banks and nonprofits to help provide meals and food services for those in need. And lastly, we'll also be assisting our smaller restaurants through our Restaurant Care Resilience Fund. So this is going to help restaurants with their employee retention, equipment upgrades, or just help manage the rising costs that they may be facing right now. So customers and business customers can visit our website at socalgas.com for more information on that. And we want to continue to encourage our customers to continue to conserve energy. Yes, we have all these programs available, but there are simple things we can do today to help lower the bills, such as lowering the thermostat three to five degrees, health permitting, wash clothes in cold water, reduce the temperature on their water heater to 120 degrees, and limit the use of non-essential natural gas appliances, such as spas, pool heaters, and fireplaces. And again, customers can visit socalgas.com, manage higher bills for more information. So what I did provide to you today is also more information on how customers can manage their bills, as well as a fuller explanation and fact sheet of what I've provided to you as well. So with that, I'll close. And if you or any of your constituents have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me directly as a resource, and I'll be more than happy to help you or help them with any questions or concerns they have.
I think one of the biggest concerns I have is we all experienced tremendous increase, I mean astronomical increase in our gas bills, I think with little or no notice. I mean, that's a disturbing factor. I mean, we have people on fixed income that live in our city and so forth. And all of a sudden, to get a, to go from 50, 75 bucks to $400 on your gas bill without notice or without anything was just, you know, shock.
Yes.
And so, and then on top of that, I think you're also in the process of asking for a rate increase, are you not?
Yes, that's through our general rate case. So I wanted to, let me address both of those. So the first I'll address is, it was just a perfect storm that kind of happened with regards to the high gas bills. So what I wanted to share from the U.S. Energy Information Administration, the EIA, there were several factors that contributed to that, one of which was the below-normal temperatures that hit the West Coast. So not just California, but also Oregon and Washington. And because of that, there was a higher demand for heating by customers in those areas with these below-normal temperatures. Additionally, we had a reduction of natural gas supplies coming in from Canada, the Rocky Mountains, and also from Texas. And that also caused a lower natural gas storage levels among the West Coast. As soon as we found out that these prices were going to be higher than normal, I think this was the beginning of January, we tried to hit the ground running, notifying as many customers, constituents, council, all of our municipalities as quickly as possible. And we've been doing that on a weekly basis. As soon as we get information, we want to share it. Now, with regard to the general rate case, this is something that we do for every four years. And timing is not great on this, but there's a reason for it. So we submitted our general rate case to the California Public Utilities Commission. And this request comes to project cost to deliver natural gas for our 22 million customers between the years of 2024 through 2027. Now, the rate request will allow for a number of things. It's going to enhance the reliability of safety of natural gas service, which is going to include the modernization and infrastructure upgrades that are so desperately needed for our infrastructure. It's going to support the growth of diverse renewable energy options, where SoCalGas aims to decarbonize our systems over the long term. It's going to help retain and attract qualified, diverse workforce. And it's also going to enhance our customer information systems, including the protection of personal data. So just to close with that, I wanted to add is that, you know, we are dedicated to maintaining the safety and reliability of our more than 100,000 miles of pipeline. We have pipelines from Kern County that run all the way down to the Mexican border. So this ensures that SoCalGas can continue to provide safe and reliable service to our homes, to our businesses, our hospitals, our schools, and to our natural gas-fired power plants that we have right here on the coast. As you know, that provides electricity to, if not all, Southern California and as well as LA County.
But you're telling me you don't do any type of forecasting with regards to weather and temperatures and things like that to adjust your volume of flow and gas to your different neighborhoods and things like that? You should have anticipated that and then been able to come to the general public and say, hey, heads up, you know, this is going to take place, that type of thing. I just felt like I, you know, it was, everyone were caught off guard.
Yes.
Didn't know anything about this. And they got these, and now it's, now it's like your suggestion's on your paper, and I'll let the rest of the council weigh in. But all the suggestions seem to be putting the burden on the homeowner or the person buying the gas. Turn your thermostats down, do this, do this, do this. But I don't, I don't hear, and you're also asking for a rate increase again. So it seems like to me, you're pushing everything like everybody else does to the consumer, as opposed to taking responsibility for these things and doing something about it so that you don't impact the people that use the service. That's my dissatisfaction with the gas company right now. And I hope everyone goes to the, or provides information to the hearing about the rate increase in a negative fashion. So that's just my two cents. Another council member, yes, sir?
I'd like to echo Mayor Pitts's statements. I think they're right on point. I've got a couple of questions for you. Is the current energy policy of this presidential administration at all in any way, shape, or form something that makes the natural gas business difficult or challenging?
Well, that's a great question. That's not something that I can actually speak to specifically. What I can speak to is how the prices are affecting us here just within Southern California and how our rates affected here for SoCalGas. But I can't speak to, again, what's happening on a national region and how that may or may not be impacting that.
Is the current policy towards natural gas by the governor's administration making it a challenge for you to do business in the state of California?
Well, what I could tell you is, and to Mayor Pitts's point, is that we have been instructed or asked or told that we do need to reduce our natural gas storage levels, specifically within our Aliso Canyon storage facility. So we, at one point, did have higher levels. We've been asked to reduce those reduction levels. So there is less natural gas capacity at those storage fields right now. So that does impact that.
Not to cut you off, but why is that the case?
Well, I believe you may recall back in 2017, there was an issue at the Aliso Canyon.
There was a leak, correct?
Yes, sir. And so because of that, that resulted in, again, asking them to reduce the natural gas storage levels there.
Are there other facilities where natural gas can be stored locally, when I say locally, within the state of California?
I believe there is, yes. I do, I don't have the location, but I know there is another location that we do have storage fields at. So I can go back and get those details for you.
Certainly appreciate a follow-up on that, because I am very concerned about the lack of forecasting about the rates that all of our homeowners and residents and people throughout our communities are facing. I think this is a, and I know you're trying to do your part and share information. I don't hold you personally accountable. But SoCalGas really needs to do a better job. This is inappropriate and borderline inexcusable for people on fixed income to face these kind of rate hikes. Thank you.
So I'd like to say thank you for coming. I know it's probably not a very comfortable position for you to be in right now. And I echo the sentiments of both Mayor Pro Tim Rosini and Mayor Pitts in that the forecasting issue, that I'm really finding, and please take this back again, this is not directed at you, but I'm finding it hard to believe that there wasn't some sort of forecasting, early-on warning signs.
early-on warning signs with the cost that you say it was set by the market, right? So, so I believe that they should have done a better job on that. And secondly, I, I find it highly unacceptable, especially with what's going on and the fact that now you're saying that the storage levels are lower for reasons. The market has set the price way too high, the winter storms all over the place. I find it entirely unacceptable to request this rate increase at this time now. And I think that if Southern California Edison wanted to come back with some sort of goodwill, good faith effort, instead of giving us a litany of, of, of things that we could do, again, putting it back on us, I think delaying this, this rate increase request would, would probably be a very prudent suggestion.
Just real quick, it's Southern California.
Sorry, Southern California, my apologies.
Edison's not here today.
Southern California, sorry, gas. My apologies.
No, that's okay.
I was thinking of you.
Again, thank you for coming. To our point, this is not meant at you. It's, it's a message that you should take back to them and tell them that, you know, that there's got to be a better way to do this. And there's shared responsibility in all of this. Again, putting it on the backs of the consumer is not fair, especially with the inflation and everything that everyone is going through right now. Costs are going through the, through the roof. If you listen to the news, you know, people's credit card bills are astronomical right now, billions and billions of dollars, because they can't afford, they don't have the income or the pay to offset the costs that they're getting. And when you get a, when you're used to a fifty or seventy-five dollar gas bill and all of a sudden it's four hundred and fifty dollars, it's like, oh, my goodness, you know? It's like, what do you do? And then, oh, guess what? I got to pay it in thirty days and they're going to cut the gas off. So, you know, it's just, it's a little hard to swallow. And especially for a community like this, where we have a lot of senior citizens on fixed social security income and things like that. It's just tough, so.
No, I, I, I thank you for your comments.
I would also encourage everybody to, 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 to write and to say no to this rate increase.
Yes, thank you for your comments. The Public Utilities Commission will hold those hearings. I believe all customers should have received an email as well with the details of that. They can go online, they can do a public hearing, public comment, excuse me, verbally, or they can email it in as well. So I will take this back. So I do appreciate your feedback. I will take it up the flagpole. And I, and I am, I, I feel it too as well, right? It was like we're getting squeezed in every nook and cranny here. And it, it was, it's been a very difficult time for, for many constituents and myself included.
And I realize the costs are going up because of inflation and other things too for all of us, you know? And I realize that you all may be experiencing some of that as well. But still, councilperson.
I have a question. Does SoCalGas help the needy customers? Or our seniors mainly who is on, you know, fixed income? Is there any kind of program that allows, like, fixed income?
Yes, we have, we have what's called a level pay program, where they can actually call our customer service center to get their bills averaged out for the year. But specifically, right now, we are offering extensions on their bills and making payment arrangements for all of our customers. Income fixed or not, yes, we are offering payment arrangements, payment extensions, delaying, as I mentioned, our activities on overdue accounts and delaying disconnections on that as well.
That payment extension, is that something that someone has to call to request? Or are you guys pushing that out as some sort of like information campaign?
They would have to actually call our call center as they have direct access to the customer account information, and they can do it in the computer right then and there and arrange that.
But what I'm saying is, is, are people made aware of that program just because it's listed on their bill? Or is it something where when they call and say, I'm having an issue, it's offered at that point in time? Does that make sense? Is it something you're advertising?
That's a great question. If they were to call in, if they're advertising, I, I will check into that. I can't confirm if, if you were to call in as a customer and then the other person on this phone offers that directly. But that's actually a great point. So I will, I will go back and check that.
Well, and maybe it's something that we could put on our feeder as well. If there was some sort of marketing or something that said, you know, having issues, having problems, you know, go ahead and call and they'll work out a extension or something to that. Just so that, we do have a lot of seniors and a lot of residents that, that have very fixed incomes. And they may not know that is available to them.
Okay, yeah, I, I will check into that. And now I'll get back to Steve Franks and share that information. But again, if somebody does reach out to the city, again, please use me as a resource, and I can try and help them directly as well.
Okay, well, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
Take care. All right, Orange County Sheriff's Department. Evening, sir.
Mayor Pitts, thank you for having me here tonight. As, as many of you know, tonight will be my last Villa Park City Council meeting. I'm saddened by that. I will be retiring from the Sheriff's Department after twenty-seven and a half years next week. So I'll be moving on. I brought my replacements, we'll, we'll get to that here shortly. But I want to just thank you all for the partnership. It's been a great three years. I've really enjoyed this assignment with the city of Villa Park. I have a lot of good fond memories from when I was a deputy working up here and as a sergeant, being able to come back and, and serve the city. The city's always been so hospitable towards us. The, the residents are friendly, and we really do get a, a good feeling of, you know, partnership and a, and a positive relationship with, with the city. So I'm just, I'm very honored to, to be here and have had the opportunity to, to work in this community, so thank you very much.
It's been our honor to have you here with us. I mean, you have, you have provided phenomenal service to our community. People love you here. I'll speak for myself, I've, I've had really great interactions with you and talks and discussions and all kinds of different things. And our, our community is a safe community and one that is looked up to because of the service that you, your deputies, and the sheriff provide our city. So we all thank you very much. I'll let each one of them thank you themselves too, but.
Thank you.
And before you go, I'd like to have a little picture with you too.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So what I'd like to do real quick is, if it's okay with you, I'll do the report. And then we'll move on to kind of the next order of business and go from there, so. This will be the January twenty-twenty-three report for the Orange County Sheriff's Department Villa Park Police Services. And just a point of analysis, again, we continue to notice, you know, burglaries and the property theft is, is our, really kind of our major concerns in the city. We continue to have issues with that. We did have a crime prevention meeting last Thursday. There were a few people here in attendance. I know it was broadcast on the Villa Park channel, and hopefully a lot of the residents had an opportunity to watch it. And I don't know if it's still something that people can watch. I hope so. And we just want to remind folks, you know, with that, to take steps to protect yourself, your property, to reduce the possibility of being victimized. Because there definitely is an element in our community that that's their profession, is to, you know, victimize other people. It's unfortunate, but it is what it is. So for the month, we did have a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-five calls for service. And some of those noteworthy incidents are as follows. On the twenty-ninth, on the ninety-two-hundred block of Hidden Valley Drive, we did have a, really an accidental discharge of a handgun in the backyard. The homeowner was out there. No one was injured, fortunately. We just, again, you know, if you're going to have a firearm out, do it at a range somewhere safe where it's designed for that and use some basic gun safety procedures. We had four burglary incidents, one on the seventh at eighteen-thousand block of Taft Avenue. This was actually at the high school. Deputies were patrol checking the high school and came across some subjects who were breaking into the actual vending machines on campus. And we were able to apprehend them. It was a very small loss, but what we found was is, these guys, again, are, they're career criminals, and this is what they do. They, they go around and break into these machines. And it was, you know, Villa Park High School's night. And fortunately, we were there and able to intercede and apprehend them. So it worked out great. On the thirteenth, we had a commercial burglary here in the shopping center, loss of about one-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The subjects entered one business that did not have an alarm and then went through the interior wall to enter the business that was their target. So if you're a business owner, you know, again, take those precautions to protect your establishment, to prevent that type of crime. On the twentieth, we had burglary on the nine-thousand-seven-hundred block of Crestview. This is a high-value loss residential burglary, over two-hundred-thousand dollars in loss. This is all the indicators that it would be what we call a South American Theft Group-type burglary, very organized individuals. They target certain specific types of houses and have a specific manner of entering the property. They prefer, and we did, and we talked about this again at the crime prevention meeting, is they like the rear sliding door, preferably second story. So if you have an alarm system or camera system, make sure you're protecting that second floor entrances as well. These individuals know that most likely those entrances aren't protected, so we want to take the steps to protect that. We are working that, it's active investigation. We have developed a couple of leads in that. So hopefully, through time, we will apprehend the suspects in that one. On the twenty-seventh, on eighteen-thousand block of Rosenow, we had another residential burglary in this incident. There was no loss. The homeowners came home and scared the suspects off. So we got fortunate on that one. On the fourth, we had a vandalism, a rear window smashed on the nine-thousand-seven-hundred block of Center Drive. We did have one petty theft incident, theft from a mailbox on Villa Park Road. We had two narcotics arrests, one on the nineteenth at Wanda and Monroe and one at Old Lamp lighter in Santiago. And these were, again, were a result of deputies conducting either a traffic stop or a pedestrian stop of subjects. We had, hold on, I have to count here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine traffic collisions. Most of them were non-injury. We did have one injury, traffic collision, which was a complaint of pain. You know, we've had some inclement weather that we're definitely not used to in Southern California, and we'll probably have a couple more nights of it. We can't stress enough that please slow down. And most of these are probably, you know, speed-related types of traffic collisions. So when it's raining out and the visibility's reduced, we need to slow down. We need to recognize that, you know, we can't turn and stop in the, as fast as we normally, normally would be able to. So drive carefully in the inclement weather. As far as the traffic enforcement category, we issued seventeen parking citations. The patrol deputies issued sixteen traffic citations. And then our motor officer issued thirty traffic citations. That concludes the report. I can take any questions on those items if you like.
I don't have any questions, but I don't know when it's appropriate to say thank you. Can I do that now?
Sure.
So I, thank you for the report. And but, because I don't know if you're going to now introduce our, 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 our new guys.
I can do whatever you like, ma'am.
Well, I just want to say thank you, not just for the three years that you've been here, which it seems like longer, but, but for all your years of service. And wish you the best. And, you know, they've got some big shoes to fill. And I, I know that, that they will probably do so. But I really appreciate that you understood our community and understood what Villa Park is and stands for and the people here. So I just want to say thank you, especially from my family and for the residents that I represent. And wish you the best and happiest of retirement. And please come back anytime and see us.
Thank you.
I just want to echo Councilwoman Miles's comments, but specifically, I just want to say thank you for always answering the phone when I called. That's huge.
Well, it's funny, I was talking about this earlier. Villa Park's unique because, you know, we, we don't have the statistical numbers to, to really draw any really good conclusions because we usually have one or two a month. Whereas, you know, when you have a larger city where you go from, you know, maybe fifteen to forty, then it's easier to kind of make those, you know, analytical inferences. It's hard to do here. I can say that, you know, across the region and in really Southern California, residential burglaries especially are, are up. And a lot of the agencies, you know, we're still kind of getting our statistical numbers together because the DOJ transitioned to a new system. So we don't really have our finite, you know, stats right now. But I know from having talked to our, you know, partners in Ventura County, they're, they have a big issue with this type of residential burglaries. I know South Orange County does. So I think anecdotally it is. I don't have any, like I said, stats to really back it up at this point in time, but I would definitely say so.
Well, I think your, the crime prevention program that you put on the other day was excellent. I think it also brought to light things that we all need to consider. You know, look out for our neighbors, you know, cameras do capture. You know, the more cameras we have on streets, you know, for, for our own home use, we, we are able to capture people doing things that they shouldn't be doing. So awareness and reporting things, if you see something, report it. You know, if you, if you're uncertain, call the sheriff and, and report it. So thank you for what you did the other night. That was really, really good. And we may have another follow-up at, at some point. But I did get two, two letters from two constituents thanking you for doing that who watched it after the fact.
Okay, good.
They didn't come, but they saw it after the fact.
Yeah, and, and you touched on it, you know, if you see something, you, you got to say something, right? That's the slogan. And a lot of times what we experience is people see something and it's out of the norm, they don't feel right about it, but they're going to call four friends first and say, hey, I saw this, what do you think? Well, now we have this lag time before we respond. So we just want to encourage people, if you see something and it's in your neighborhood and it doesn't look right or feel right, then just call us. Let us come check it out right away. And then you can call everyone else and tell them, hey, guess what? I got to call the Sheriff's Department, you know?
We have a mom chat line around my neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good, networking, networking.
Yep. Who's our, who's our lucky replacement?
So, two things. If you remember, we had Sergeant Troy Feely, he was my administrative sergeant, so he's promoted. So I brought, in his place is Sergeant Vic Valdez. He's going to take the administrative sergeant spot. He's got a lot of experience in patrol operations, special investigations. He worked in Mission Viejo and was in the administrative side down there. So he's going to fill in and move that. I think he's going to do a great job for you in that regards. And then just briefly, because I know Mayor Pro Tim Rosini wants to speak to my replacement, but Captain A.J. Patel is going to take my, my place. A.J. and I worked together as deputies up here. So he knows the community well, and he's an excellent communicator. And I think you're going to be really happy with, with him here. So I'll give it to Councilman Rosini. And Captain Patel, do you want to, you want to come up? Put you on the spot. You get used to it.
Well, thank you again for, for your time and dedication to our city. It gives me a tremendous amount of pleasure. It's a great honor for me to introduce our, our next captain and chief of police services for the city of Villa Park and North Patrol Operations. It's a much bigger thing than just frankly, the city of Villa Park. Not that we're not important, but he's got a lot on his, on his plate. Captain Patel joined the Orange County Sheriff's Department in, and correct me if I'm wrong here, looks like January of nineteen ninety-nine. And he was a SSO for approximately four years. Graduated from the Sheriff's Academy in July of two thousand and three. Quickly promoted to the rank of sergeant. Twenty-sixteen, I believe, is the timeframe. He was a deputy sheriff too before that. Rose through the ranks and became a lieutenant in February of two thousand and twenty, eventually becoming a captain in two thousand and twenty-one. But that really doesn't do his career justice. He spent twenty-four years in law enforcement. He's currently the head of the Behavioral Health Bureau for the Sheriff's Department, which is a critically important unit for both federal, state, and local law enforcement partners and for frankly, what we're dealing with all throughout our society now. There's such a huge focus on, on prevention and trying to keep things from going boom or an incident from happening. And I want to turn it over to you, please. Tell us a little bit about the Behavioral Health Bureau and a little bit about yourself, and welcome.
Wow, wasn't expecting that. Thank you very much, sir. Well, the Behavioral Health Bureau, it kind of morphed out of the homeless outreach efforts in the county, especially out of the riverbed. But what we realized very quickly is that a lot of our homeless population had mental health needs as well, so we tried to combine those efforts to make a more of a broader mental health and homeless outreach throughout the whole county. And that's basically what our team has been doing, and we're building it from the ground up. We're kind of doing the plane while we're flying it. So we're trying to expand our behavioral health response system, and I think we're doing a pretty good job as a department of doing that. Luckily, a lot of those things don't necessarily touch Villa Park as much, but it does affect the county as a whole. And like I believe our guest of honor said, this type of issues, they don't know any boundaries, so they can, they can definitely come into the city, so. But that's a, I wasn't expecting to talk about Behavioral Health Bureau, I was talking about what I was going to be doing here, but, but thank you for asking about that. It is a very important mission, it's something I really believe in, and I hope my replacement in that particular bureau does, carries that mission on.
Well, I thank you and forgive me for putting you on the spot there, but I think it's important to highlight the efforts of the BHB. They're tremendous, obviously. Your role as the chief of police services and patrol in this area and other arenas are going to be critically important to us, and you kind of have a feeling of the expectations. I know I've spoke to many of the rank-and-file deputies that are out there, I've spoken to some commanders, and you are extremely well-respected amongst all, and I thank you and I look forward to working with you and having you as our chief of police services. Welcome.
Likewise, sir. Thank you very much. I have extreme fond memories, like Gary, of working here as a deputy, and I really look forward to being part of the entire Villa Park team. With that said, I'd like to take the focus off of me and put it on this gentleman, because I'm not sure if he's going to let me embarrass him at a party later on down the road, but he's, hopefully. But honestly, Gary, you were probably one of the best area partners I ever had, one of the best deputies I ever worked with. He's always been a mentor, a coach, really a hero of mine, and I'm not just speaking for me, I can speak for Vic and probably everybody you've ever worked with. Thank you for everything. I love you like a brother, and I hope you get a long and very enjoyable retirement. You've earned it. God bless you, brother, and...
Can we get a picture with all their partners in law enforcement? Sorry, folks, we're running a little long on these, this portion tonight, but we have a lot to be thankful for.
Absolutely. Good evening.
Especially our fire authority partners.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and Honorable City Council. Thank you for letting me be here tonight to tell you about the OCFA and the events in the City of Villa Park over the last month. We had 94 units dispatched to 36 incidents within the city, and then most recently here in last week with the weather events, I just wanted to highlight that we upstaffed several of our resources to, that we're ready to respond throughout the county to any of our jurisdictions. We had a strike team, two extra bulldozers, a hand crew, firefighters, which consists of 20 people. We upstaffed our additional rescue on our helicopter, an additional dispatcher, and we do that from time to time when we get the weather report. And Calloway S., fortunately, they reimbursed for the pre-positioning of those units, so I want to give credit where credit is due for that as well. Fortunately, we didn't need to use them throughout the last incident. Very few incidents out in the canyon areas, specifically where we were most concerned probably, following the bond incident. Public Works did an outstanding job, and very few incidents out there, and nothing of any significance. Happy to report that. The safety topic of the month is exit drills in the fire home, and so just a couple of stats, and any of this information can be found at ocfa.org. There's a home fire that occurs nationwide every 87 seconds. Where there, where there's a fire, every, every second counts, and although fire experts agree that people have as little as two minutes to escape a burning home, at least 62% of Americans believe that they have five minutes, and 18% believe that they have 10 minutes or more to get out of the home. I'm here to confirm what the experts have said, and you have as little as two minutes or less. With today's, there's great videos online you can look at with legacy furniture versus modern-day furniture, and I assure you, you'll be, it would probably blow you away at how fast a room can be filled with fire with modern-day furnishing. So we encourage you to meet, have a plan, sit down with your family, have a plan, and practice it, certainly with young children. Show them the way, you know, when they're too young to really understand how to get out. Make sure you show how you're going to help them, where you're going to meet, and make sure you practice it a couple of times a year. Again, that can be found at ocfa.org. Probably one of the most important things, I would say, is to teach them to close doors behind them, or as you're working on these drills in your home, to close the doors. Even the thin, lightweight hollow-core doors can give you up to 20 minutes of safety in that room, and I've seen it time and time again, where we'll have one room that's completely damaged by fire, and the room right next to it or across the hall that had the door closed has minor smoke damage, and everything in there is salvageable. So please close doors as you're exiting as well. And then certainly, last but not least, one more, I know we've, I mentioned it last month when I was here as well, but our open house. Our first open house in three years is this Saturday. I know you've all been invited, certainly if you need any more information, call or text me from the council, and then anybody in the public can go to ocfa.org backslash open house. It's from 10 to 3, and it's a, it's a great event. Our helicopter will be there, we'll have dozers there, we'll have our investigations canine there. There are demonstrations all throughout the day. There's live burns they do out on our drill ground, so it's a great event for the whole family, so I hope to see you there. And that's the end of my report, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anything?
Just, I'm looking forward to Saturday, but, and I don't know what the weather report is, it seems like a change, but is it rain or shine?
You know, as of this point, it'll be rain or shine, depending on the forecast, but right now, we're moving forward with it.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do for Villa Park. Appreciate you. Okay, at this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, is there anyone who wrote in or has a comment?
Not for general comments, no.
Okay. So now we'll move to our, move into our agenda as public hearings. Our first hearing is to review and waive the reading of the full ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you. This is the monthly item we have to allow us to run expeditions meetings, so we'd recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Okay, so our computer has dropped, so we're going to have to do a verbal, it's not holding a charge, so it's dying, so we'll take a verbal vote tonight. So we'll go that. Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Our next hearing is variance 2023-02 at 10522 Beardsley Circle. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you. This is, as you mentioned, a variance request. I'll pass it over to, I believe, Justin Oransky, will give a presentation, and will be available for questions afterwards.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you, is variance 2023-02. The subject application involves 10522 Beardsley Circle, which is a 12,483 square-foot property in the R1 zone. The property is currently improved with a 2,600-square-foot, one-story, single-family dwelling and a pool. The existing house is legal nonconforming, as it encroaches 18 feet 9 inches into the minimum required 25-foot rear yard building setback. The property is also improved with two detached patio structures totaling around 500 square feet in size, but they're not in scope of the variance, and the lot coverage is within the allowable percentage. The variance applicant is Richard Savalos. The focus of the application is a 724-square-foot addition consisting of a new three-car garage and storage room. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a deviation from the minimum required rear yard building setback. Per Section 23-6.10 of the Villa Park zoning code, additions to existing single-family dwellings in the R1 zone must maintain a 25-foot rear yard building setback. For the variance, the applicant is requesting a 10-foot rear yard building setback, which is a deviation of 15 feet at the closest point. The property owner justifies the variance application for two reasons. First, the house is legal nonconforming and encroaches over 18 feet into the required rear yard building setback. The legal nonconforming nature of the existing house makes it very difficult to construct additions absent of variance. The second justification for the variance centers around the property's odd contours. The property has five lot lines, two of which are rear lot lines, and the two rear lot lines yield over 5,000 square feet of non-buildable area. Most other properties in the vicinity are more regularly shaped, with only one rear lot line and a larger buildable pad. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, public hearing notices for this variance request were mailed and posted at least 10 calendar days prior to this public hearing, and the public hearing notice was also published in a local newspaper. We've received five letters of support for the variance, including one, which I just received today, so I can read that out loud if you would like, as it's not in the exhibit. So finally, after carefully looking at the property, the neighborhood, and the zoning code, city staff recommends approval of variance 2023-02, because the north rear property line functions like a side property line, and it yields a large 25-foot building setback. The existing house also heavily encroaches into this required setback area, and these conditions make constructing additions to the existing single-family dwelling very difficult absent this variance. I'll now be happy to answer questions or comments.
Justin, did we get any letters of, that said no?
We did not.
Okay. So we had five support letters? Okay. Council members, any comments, questions? Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that you consider this property to have two rear setbacks, then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All good? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on the hearing?
No, we have nobody to speak on this specific item.
Okay. No one wrote in?
No.
Okay.
Well, just the ones that he mentioned, the five he received.
Right, 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 okay. All right. So council members, any other discussion on this item?
I would just like to thank the property owner for following through with the, I'm going to say proper way, you know, asking for the variance, whatnot, before doing any work, so, and they're here in the audience, so I just want to say I appreciate that you guys did this the correct way, also interacting with your neighbors and having input and making sure that you are being neighborly with your neighbors and discussing it with them, and then, of course, them providing their support, so that's it.
I think it'll be a beautiful addition. I think, I'm jealous of your new master bedroom, but it's going to be beautiful. I think you'd be proud of it. Are you going to say something?
Yeah, just full disclosure, Richard Savalos and his lovely wife have been good supporters of Villa Park Little League, and in particular, their son and a team that my son played on. We have a limited relationship, so I want to put that out there, full disclosure. We don't regularly hang out, we don't regularly associate, and that's through no fault of their own, but just my crazy schedule. But I wanted to put that out there in case there's a question about that. I have no issue, in my opinion, as far as ethically voting on this. I just wanted to put that out there. They were examples of how this community should go about seeking a variance. They reached out to us, they reached out to their neighbors, they did everything proactively, and I commend them for that, for doing their due diligence and being a kind, friendly neighbor, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Well, if that's the case, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the matter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
We'll take a verbal, Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you all for coming.
Congratulations.
Our next hearing is variance 2023-03 at 9531 Los Flores Circle. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you. I'll call on Justin again.
Yes, so before you is variance 2023-03. The subject application involves 9531 Los Flores Circle, which is a 42,859 square-foot property in the E4 zone. The property is currently improved with a 5,099-square-foot, two-story, single-family dwelling, a pool, gardens, and a putting green. The existing house is legal nonconforming, as it encroaches 15 feet into the minimum required rear yard building setback and 10 feet into the minimum required side yard building setback. And the variance applicant is Danny Wang. The focus of the application is a 3,646-square-foot attached addition at the rear of the house. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a deviation from the minimum required rear and side yard building setbacks. Per Section 23-6.10 of the Villa Park zoning code, additions to this property must maintain a 25-foot rear yard building setback and a 20-foot side yard building setback, and the applicant is requesting a 10-foot rear yard building setback and a 13-foot side yard building setback. The property owner justifies the variance application for two reasons. First, the existing house is legal nonconforming and encroaches 15 foot, 15 feet into the required rear yard building setback and 10 feet into the required side yard setback. Additionally, the orientation of the house is such that it faces the rear of the property, not the front. The orientation of the existing house makes it difficult to construct additions absent of variance. The second justification for the variance centers around the property's odd contours and difficult topography. The property is unusually shaped and has numerous side and rear lot lines, which set it apart from neighboring properties in the same zone. The unusual lot shape and slope topography reduce the buildable pad and makes it difficult to construct additions to the main house. As stated earlier, pursuant to the zoning ordinance, we did mail and post public hearings at least 10 calendar days prior to this variance application going before you, and the public hearing was also published in a local newspaper. To date, we have received a supplemental letter of justification and plans with the proposed additions. I have received today, I received three letters of opposition to the variance, and because I did just receive them today, they're not in my staff report, so I can read those or discuss those if you would like. So with that in mind, after carefully looking at the property, the neighborhood, and the zoning code, city staff recommends approval of variance 2023-03. First, it's because the existing house is legal nonconforming, and the legal nonconforming nature makes it very difficult to construct additions due to the large setback encroachments. Additionally, the additions would not perpetuate the legal nonconforming conditions and would actually sit further from the property lines compared to where the house is currently. And finally, the property is unique in the sense that it is much more oddly shaped than other properties in the immediate vicinity, and the difficult contours significantly reduce the buildable pad for the property owner. So I will not answer questions or comments.
Probably prudent if you read the letters.
They're quite long, so bear with me. Okay, so the first letter, we do not have an address, but it says, "To the Villa Park City Council. I am writing regarding the public notice regarding reducing building setbacks on Los Flores Circle. I am worried that approving a 60% reduction in setbacks is a bad precedent for future houses and additions. As it is, with many of the lots and buildings to be constructed, privacy will be a concern. This will exacerbate with close setbacks. There are also lots and new constructions that will be near hills and foundations, and allowing setbacks to get closer and closer to those slopes will no doubt cause issues down the line for neighboring property owners. I urge pru- I urge prudence when allowing items like this to pass and setting precedence for the future."
Was it signed, or was it?
It is signed. I am not sure who the...
It's difficult to read, it's just a scribble signature, it's not legible.
There's no address?
No address, no.
The second letter is from 19022 Canyon Drive, Mr. and Mrs. Jackson. It states, "We have just been informed of the variance number 2023-02 two days ago. We are against a variance that allows an extremely large two-story house being built above us that would infringe on our personal privacy as it is within full view of our property. We moved here nearly 11 years ago and have embraced the spirit of community, but also our main goal of having privacy in space, which is what attracted us to this particular part of Villa Park. We enjoy such privacy of having friends and family and our little children running around the garden without any intrusion from our neighbors, and so this variance is of grave concern that it will threaten as such. I have no information that has clarified or reassured our questions and concerns, so we oppose this moving forward. We sit below ground level, and the property would look down on us from a huge height. We have another neighbor that has their home set right back, so we still have privacy. Our home in Villa Park has afforded us the privacy and respite from a public platform we hold. We hope it will remain this way. From a proprietor's perspective, Villa Park homes are the gems most wanted with ascending prices of late. We own a huge lot, and are concerned that such being built will also impact the prospects to sell in the long future should privacy be taken away. I hope this will be read kindly, I hope this will be read and considered." And the final letter is from Gary MacArthur at 19014 Canyon Drive. It states, "We just heard about the variance number 2023-02. We are against a variance that allows a very large two-story house to be built directly above the house, below, and within full view of our property next door. Most of us in Villa Park bought houses here to achieve some privacy and not to be in close proximity to other neighbors. At least this is the case in our particular area of Villa Park where the lots are larger. Our neighbors next door certainly bought for these particular reasons. It is why we purchased our house here 45 years ago. Valuation: Our neighbors undoubtedly have a property that is valued at 3.5 to 4 million. We have had offers for our house at $3 million. Not many prospective buyers would view this proposed two-story house looking down on either of our properties as a positive, and therefore, the value of both properties would be diminished. But again, this is not the primary concern. It is privacy. It is being able to have family and friends enjoy a pool party or a barbecue or some other event without the visual intrusion of a neighboring property that would sit directly above our properties. If this proposed new house was sitting at ground level, it would change thinking somewhat. We, at 19014 Canyon Drive, have a large home sitting above us, but it is setback some distance from the property line. There is no issue for us in this case. Villa Park has always been a wonderful community, but it is changing. Gone are the days when it was a community to see some residents ride their horses through the community. Almost gone are the days when chickens, geese, ducks, goats, and even pigs, in our case, were spread throughout the city. Now Villa Park is becoming an impacted city with the advent of new federal laws compelling cities to allow ADUs. Automobile traffic will increase significantly, crime will increase. We are transferring from a laid-back, safe community, small enough to know many of our neighbors, to something that will become more hectic. When we allow our city to become more impacted with small family residential units and homes being built upon each available piece of ground, we will cease to be what brought us all here."
Question? Isn't that existing house a two-story house?
Correct.
So based on what I'm reading or hearing from these letters, I'm not sure people understand that they're not modifying the back of the house, which is overlooking that property, it's going to be the same, it's just the front side that's going to be raised to add a second story. Is that not true?
It is going to be an addition to the rear of the property.
Pushing it out a little bit?
Pushing it out.
Well, sir, 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 you're out of order. Please, go ahead, Justin.
Yes, so the rear, though, because of the orientation, it would front Los Flores part of it.
Okay, okay. All right. Here, we have two public speakers that have put in comments as well.
Go ahead.
Call on them.
Yes, please.
Mr. Jim Fruth?
Thank you, everyone, for your time. The city officers have been nothing but excellent on this subject. I'm not a Quaker from Pennsylvania, but I am a farm kid from Ohio. Been a resident since 1996, and Dad, escaping World War II, said if it looks like a duck, it's probably a duck, and it looks like a duck, and that's what we got here. I'm not against the variance, and I have the largest property on Los Flores. For information, Los Flores is a private street. John's here. The three of us that have that street, own the street, maintain the street. It's 20 feet wide, city streets are 35 feet wide. So if we're going down this slippery slope, folks, of ADUs, and for your information, that is the picture of the spaceship. This is an addition to a house that is out of the Gone With The Wind, and they're putting a spaceship on it. And I don't have objection to that because at 10,000 square feet, now we got an eight, nine-million-dollar structure on our street. What I am against, the Walk Like A Duck, Smells Like A Duck, is eight additional bathrooms. Now, I don't think there's probably eight additional bathrooms in this whole city hall. What am I trying to get to? And that's not the subject of the variance. I am making a note, entering into record, that these ADUs, these halfway houses, these were required by state law with our fine gruesome governor, that we can't do anything about it. This guy can do something about it. There is not going to be an ADU unit with eight bathrooms on a second floor added on our street. And my appeal to Villa Park is, if you want to destroy, and it was brought up in this public letter, if you want to destroy a community, this continuation of multiple occupancy lots, this property is a double lot. So the people that bought it probably knew this going in, and it may be, I take everything back, it may be the most gracious mansion built in Villa Park, one of the two or three biggest in the city, but eight bathrooms added on to what already are three or four downstairs, and a spaceship instead of the Gone With The Wind look, looks like a duck, smells like a duck. So I'm going on record as appealing to the council and the city for help in these areas, and I don't really, guess I don't want to hear that it's required by the governor and we're going to solve our housing crisis by subplotting the land that we have. So actually, I'll go on record as saying, I'm not against the setbacks. The current structure of the house is already at 10 feet, and as it goes down the property line, it will not impact the street on my side. He is right, and the front of the house is up the hill, not down the hill. The rear is down the hill, which is, that's what you're going to see coming up, Los Flores. For your information, Los Flores is a private street, circular at the end of it, three houses are on it, and my objection to it, and John's also here, is the runners that are in it now have cars ranging between two and eight each night parking there. And fire department not going to get a fire truck up there if they're parked on both sides because of the restriction of width. And 10,000-square-foot house with 16 bathrooms or 12, if it looks like a duck, it probably is a duck.
Thank you, thank you for your input, sorry.
Can I ask the speaker a question?
Please.
Thank you for coming tonight, and I just wanted to, a couple of questions. Did you, did the applicant or the homeowner of the variance requested property, did they come and speak to you, or are you going off of the public notice that you received?
I'm going off the prints that I took photocopies of and created, the drawings, and the public notice that was issued. So I have no knowledge what it is. If it's R1, and you guys can enforce, and the fire department can enforce, that there's not going to be a sobriety house, or a drug rehabilitation, or six units built on to a property that has currently one house, if you can enforce that, fine.
Right, no, and those are very good questions, and actually, I have some of those similar questions. My goal, it was just to find out if you actually were able or was approached by either the applicant or the homeowner.
Neither.
Okay, thank you.
Neither.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
It's been very, and I was hoping that the architect was here tonight.
He is.
Then, may I hear?
We're down with public comment, yeah.
We're out of order right now, so let's...
Any other questions, council, that I can address?
Thank you for coming.
Yes?
Okay, thank you. Steve?
Our second speaker is, I don't want to mispronounce his name, so I'm just going to call him Tom, which he has kindly put in parentheses that I should call him.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, good evening, the council.
Your address is?
9551 Los Flores. I'm, the house right behind this, first of all, I want to say, we moved here 2011. Love this city, great city. I'm very, I don't know about this, I don't know the code, but I do want to say one thing right now, there's about, you know, eight cars parking around. Now there's another, you know, huge set added, and I just don't want to see 20 cars parking our street. I don't know what's the rule, whether you can, you know, it's a single family, or you can just rent to 12, 15 people. That's my concern, you know. Very simple, I don't know a lot of this detailed setback, very insane, but that's my concern. I just want to say that.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Can I please ask, can I ask you the same question that I asked the prior speaker? Did the applicant or the homeowner come and speak to you about this?
No. I, from what we felt, is originally there's a family, not a family, bought by someone, but then, when we received this, I'm Chinese, this person looks Chinese, so, oh no, it's not the same. So we never know who, I don't have an opinion, you know, against...
Right, no, I just wanted to see if you were contacted, or if the homeowner or the applicant for the variance reached out to discuss with you their plans, that's all.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know that that's a requirement that we have in the...
No, the...
No, it's not.
No, it's a good neighbor policy, but it's not something that's required.
It is not required, but we do recommend to all applicants that they do so.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
No, but I believe the applicant's here if you want to address questions.
Oh, there's Mr. Jackson would like to...
Mayor Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, Darren Jackson, I am the owner of the 19022 Canyon Drive. My home sits right below 9531, and no, we haven't had anyone come to tell us what was going on. We just heard about this two days ago, and from our letter that was written by my wife, we don't know what this building is going to do to our privacy. The home is directly behind our pool area and some other areas in our backyard, and like the letter said, I mean, I've got my grandkids and kids running around, and we just don't know if it's going to encroach on that privacy. We've moved here, love this community, love living here, but it would, if our privacy is going to be lost, then because of our public platform, we're going to need to move, and we don't want to do that. So, you know, I want to put into record that we're opposing this right now until we get clarification on how this, you know, building is going to look and where is it going to sit with regards to our privacy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, anyone else?
No, that's it.
So we have the applicant here, would you like to speak?
Yeah, so thank you for giving us the opportunity to present tonight, and then I would like to address some of the concerns about privacy.
Can we have your name, please?
My name is Danny Wang, and I'm the designer architect of the property. So I was actually not aware that there were so many cars parked there right now, and I just want to clarify that my client currently is renting the house out until we get this approved. So this house is going to be 8,000 square feet, there's no 12 bathrooms, or, you know, I think it's eight, and it's actually only going to be lived by one person. So one of the reasons our client is moving here and building this house is he also cares about privacy. So there's some things that we haven't shown on the rendering, the whole property is actually being covered with tall ficus trees, so people can't see inside his house. So he definitely takes privacy very seriously, and like I said, I think, I didn't know that there were so many cars parked there right now, and moving on, moving forward, I mean, it's only going to be, you know, it's only one person living there. So it's not, it's not going to be a drug house, or it's not going to be a party house, or any of that, it's just going to be, you know, my client's moving from a different city to here because of the privacy that it provides, and I think the people behind, I forgot his name, but we're 100, 200 feet away, so we're not going to see, we're not going to be encroaching his property even after we add the addition, and even if we do, we're going to have tall trees that block, you know, block the property, and so the goal of that is, you know, even if we're on Los Flores, which is a private street, you won't be able to see inside the house either. So he's definitely very pro-privacy, so if he could see your yard, he's going to cover it. Yeah, so we're not going, we're not trying to build this thing to encroach and, you know, watch, you know, look into other people's yards. So I think if you look at the backyard, it's quite, it's quite far away from the neighboring property. It's probably 150, you know, 100, 150 feet. So I just want to clarify that, because whoever's living there now is not the tenant, and I think that's why he didn't have time to go around to get letter support, because currently, ever since he bought the house, you know, we started this process, and during that time, he rented out to a different tenant. So that's, you know, I just want to make sure, clarify that, it's not going to be, you know, 20 people living there, it's actually going to be one person. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any other comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Me as well.
For the benefit of those folks that haven't seen the plans, that aren't familiar with this, what size is the house currently? What is the current square footage?
Is that directed to the applicant?
Danny, can you address that? Can you come up and address it?
You need to come up to the microphone.
It should be on the front page of the plans, sir.
Yeah, so currently, I believe it's a 4,900 square feet. So currently, it is, let's see, it's 4,156.
4,156.
Yeah.
And it's going to be how big, if you build it as you've drawn it?
We're proposing to add 2,881 feet, so it'll be 7,000 feet total.
7,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Would it be possible to build that house without a variance? Is there something structural that is requiring the variance?
Well, so this property, so right now, as it sits, as it sits right now, no, because, you know, the house is oriented very oddly, where the front yard is actually, no, the front of the house is actually facing the rear yard. So, so no, but, and actually, I want to address, because we do have a double lot, and initially, you know, we, our client, actually, I advised the client to split the lot, because now he could build four houses, right, or two houses, but he actually did not want to do that, he actually wanted to preserve it as one lot, so then he could, you know, so he could not add, you know, we're not trying to add maximum square foot, addressing one of the gentleman's concern, we're not trying to maximize ADUs, we're not trying to maximize occupancy. He actually was against that, he wanted to keep one house versus splitting in different lots, yeah.
So you mentioned something earlier about planting trees and providing privacy in shade, or privacy to the other affected neighbors. Is that something that you folks would be willing to put into writing so that they have some assurances?
Yeah, definitely, and actually, if you go look at the property now, you actually could not see any neighbors in the backyard.
I'm very familiar with the property, been by it multiple times. What causes me great concern, I'll be honest with you, is exactly what I think Councilman Miles is getting to. Unlike our prior applicant, nobody's come to talk to us, nobody has approached us. And yes, Mayor Pitts is correct, it is not a requirement, but a variance is an exception to the rule. It's not something that is just pencil-whipped. We may be a small city, but we care about our neighbors.
Yeah, definitely.
And we need to know who our neighbors are, and we need to know what their plans are and what they're going to do. It's the respectful and right thing to do.
Okay.
So I have very, very grave concerns about one person living in a 9,000-square-foot house. That story just doesn't seem to add up. You know, the gentleman Walk Like A Duck, he made that, that just seems a little, seems a little off-base there, so I'm... seems a little off-base there, so, I'm concerned that we haven't had the opportunity to view the site, we haven't had the opportunity to meet the applicant, we haven't had an opportunity to understand what his or her intentions are going to be, I believe it's a gentleman that you mentioned. Regardless of some of the other commercial uses that other people have mentioned, I'm not even gonna go into that debate. Obviously, there are other things people can do. That is a private street, and you start trying to subdivide something, you know, stand by, there's all kinds of fire code issues that may come into play.
Yeah, okay, we're not trying to subdivide it.
There's all kinds of planning that may happen to come, is that, is this an ultra-high-fire hazard zone? There are a lot of considerations that I think your client should consider. First and foremost is being neighborly, and either instructing his representatives, or he himself coming to the council, or at least calling us, or having his representatives call us so that we can set up an appropriate time in advance of a meeting to go over this, and also to, most importantly, reach out to his neighbors that are affected. So, I for one am against this, I will certainly consider continuance out of respect for the process. I think that we've seen examples in Villa Park of developers who say one thing, and then do something different, and exploit city staff for that, when they start building, you know, boxes around the city that look like the Holiday Inn. I don't want that to happen to these individuals. I really don't. So, I'm very concerned about a building that size without knowing more. I mean, perhaps story polls might be beneficial, you're familiar with the term story polls and what those are used for, so that the affected homeowners can have an understanding of how high that building's gonna be and where it's gonna go?
Yeah.
Okay, just a thought.
And I think, and I think that's one of the things that's kind of confusing, we're not, we're actually not bumping out that much in the back, and then the front yard, we're not exceeding, we're not exceeding the existing height, and the way this, the house is situated, again, you know, it's really, if you go see the house in person, you're not, you can't see, you won't be able to see the neighbors, I mean, yeah.
Well, your neighbors do not share your concerns, and I haven't been on the property 'cause I haven't been invited onto the property to do that, so.
Also, there's a gate.
I would enjoy that opportunity if your client afforded it, he didn't feel that it was valuable to do that, so I appreciate your time.
I have a comment also. There's more questions. There's more questions.
Go ahead.
So, when I was looking at the plans, it said, just said, existing landscaping, except where noted, and there wasn't much additional landscaping noted. So, you're now saying that there will be other additional landscaping, tall trees?
Yeah, so, I didn't know if that was part of the, part of the variance, 'cause right now, we're trying to just get the variance through, I mean, if we need to draw on the landscape plan, having, you know, having tall trees, I mean, we could do the whole rendering to kind of show you guys what the house will look like, I mean, our goal, his goal, is to make sure, you know, the house has complete privacy, where, you know, no one could see it from the street, and, and that's one of the biggest reasons, he moved there is because he's very private, and that's another reason he didn't want to go reach out to neighbors, 'cause, like I said, my client's a super private person, and that's why I'm representing him to do all this.
Councilwoman, if I can interject, as a condition of approval on the variance, you can impose a restriction for, or a requirement for landscaping?
Okay, and then, I think I have a question for Justin. In your opinion, is this designed to be a multifamily-like residence, like, could be a dorm, or something?
So, based on everything we've seen, it just appears to be single-family dwelling.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Wang, I looked you up online, and the work you do is beautiful.
No, thank you.
But, pardon? Yes, absolutely stunning.
Yeah, thank you.
That being said, I noticed that you've done a lot of work in the city of LA, in the city of West Covina, in the city of Irvine. That's not us.
No, I've done a lot of property in Villa Park as well.
Okay, that was my next question. If you've done work here, then you should be familiar with kind of the common practice, especially with this council. I've been on council now, this will be my fifth year, and although, as pointed out, it's not a requirement, for us in this city, it's that good neighbor. So, when, when, typically, ninety-nine percent of the time, I will say that we get contacted, or at least an attempt is made to reach out to us, to say, hey, I've got a variance coming up, this is the property, I'd love to invite you, or if you have any questions, or can I have you come out to see? I've heard nothing, I've seen nothing, okay? That's the first thing. Second thing is usually, that person, the homeowner, would go and speak, or at least send a, somebody to represent, to go to the neighbors that are most impacted and get support. We have no letters of support, we have nothing, we have no communication, and you've got a lot of people that have a lot of questions that I can't answer, and probably Justin can't answer, just based on this. So, I love the idea of story polls. I right now, I'm a hard no, because I don't feel that there is enough information to satisfy people that have come forward, took their time to come here and say, aside from the fact that, yeah, it really concerns me, you didn't reach out, you didn't email us, I know city staff asked you to or suggested that you do that, and for some reason, you didn't feel it was important, and I'm telling you right now, for the City Villa Park, it's important. We're a small community, everybody is tight-knit, so I'm in agreement with, if not voting no, then, you know, perhaps we continue it so that your applicant can interact with some of the homeowners that have concerns.
Yeah, I think one, I mean, I don't probably five, six projects in here, it's just, usually those are, you know, the square, square, typical square Villa Park lot, so it wasn't, wasn't...
So, it didn't require a variance?
No, it didn't require a variance, so.
Well, that doesn't, that's not what I'm referring to. I'm referring to when there's a variance or some other permit that needs to come to council, we, nine, nine, nine point nine out of ten times, our, the city staff makes a recommendation, and that applicant or homeowner takes them up on it.
Big points are well taken. Do you have?
I agree with so far what is being said, so I don't want to repeat what's said, but I do want to really emphasize on what the applicant is asking for variance. Currently, Justin and Ray can correct me, from what I understood, currently, this structure is already had that variance on the first floor. It's just the applicant or the homeowner requesting, or would like to build second floor, and that's why this caused this variance. I mean, what, I mean, it is a two-story, I'm sorry, it is expanding the two, second floor to closer to that wall that is already ten feet away? I mean, the struck, I mean, the current structure is right ten feet away, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
It's close. I've seen it, I've been there.
Correct, no, I understand that, but my point is more, as right now, this property is ready, in the past, already being approved for variance. He's here is more asking for the second floor for us to approve that variance. I think that's, that is the root of the question here. I understand, being neighborly, I would recommend you to contact the neighbors and show them your drawing, show them what you plan to do, but I just want to reemphasize what the question is here. We are not here to judge whether there's a privacy issue, because clearly, Canyon, Ken, Cannon, I think, is actually north, not, north from this property, not south from this property. And also, the two letter that has been presented, actually, if you look at the map, is not directly close to this property. I appreciate the two property owner on Las Flores came to us and spoke. I, I will propose the council to allow extension for, until next month, so giving the designer and homeowner opportunity to actually show the neighbors what you plan to do, so hopefully the neighbor can understand a little bit more.
Yeah, and I think, thank you for commenting that, 'cause, and that's one of the reasons that we didn't really reach out, because we're not really encroaching to setbacks, we're actually, in the existing property, in existing house right now, it's actually already at thirty, thirty-three feet, so essentially, we're just building, you know, we're not making it taller, we're just extending it, so that's why, you know, we didn't, we didn't feel, 'cause we're not, like, we weren't going to step back into new property, we're not expanding anything, we're just using existing footprint, going up, and matching the same exact height that, you know, the roof was right now, and actually just pushing back. I think we're only pushing back twelve feet in the back, so most of the square footage is actually in the front, not in the back, so, but yeah, I understand the concern, yeah.
Would the homeowner be willing to come?
Well, I mean, yeah, if he has to, yeah, yeah, 'cause he's just, he's, I mean, he's just a very private person, but yeah, I mean, if he has to.
So, I think we have a recommendation from.
I'll make the motion.
Couple of you made a recommendation.
I, I'm not done yet, though, so, you said you were able to go on the property and see it, how'd you do that?
Yeah, he reached out to me, and then we actually met yesterday, yeah.
Okay, and?
He and this young lady spent.
Hi.
About an hour with me, going over the prints, the plans, talked about, we walked all the way around the house and looked at the footprint itself, and that's why I say on the front of the house, it's taking it up to the second story where it's already two stories.
Yeah.
So, and, I mean, the house is gonna look beautiful, it may be a little out of character with the one that's existed today, but it is gonna look beautiful, and I think it's gonna improve the value of the properties around there, but at the same time, if there's a recommendation to continue it, that's certainly something we have, certainly in the preview of this council to do so, and give them the opportunity to go talk.
Beautiful or not, I, me historically, as everyone knows, you know, I rely a lot on the, on the neighbors and how the neighbors feel, 'cause I'm not the one that has to live there, so, yes, if that's, I would make the motion to continue it so that we can hear from the homeowner, and Steve, I don't know if we're allowed to do this, but I love Mayor Protem Rosini's idea of story polls. Is that something that we can stipulate, or is that out of our line, lane?
You okay with me? Yeah, if, that would be useful for your determination, for everybody, story polls are poles that go into the sky that show how high a building is gonna be, so you can get a visual of what it is. A lot of cities do have as part of their application, primarily in beach communities where views are more paramount, but if that would be helpful to the council, I don't think it's required in any of our requirements, but for you to tell them that that will be a factor, so everybody had a good view and understanding of what the height was, if not required, it would be a strong recommendation.
Is it not just, not just height, but also placement, like how far out?
Yeah, you put the pole where the corner of the building is supposed to be.
Well, for the record, for me, that, that's gonna be a...
Yeah, I think that's typically, you know, what we do for beach communities, but, I mean, this one, really, we're not going, we're not going above the height, so, and I think that's what is intimidating, is 'cause we're showing the, we're showing the structure, really, we're not changing that much on the side and the back, so I think it's just because you're looking at it without trees and stuff, that it looks very intimidating, but we're actually not adding that much to the physical house. So, even storyboard, even storyboarding, I mean, I'm just gonna have, it's gonna be the same height as the existing house, I'm not sure if that's gonna help, but I mean, we definitely could do it.
Well, I think there was an expression from the council that would be helpful for their determination, and exercised their discretion in that if there were story polls, so they exactly knew where the facts, and the neighbors knew where the facts of where the height was and where the location was, so, take that as you will, but I think it will be very helpful for everybody if you do do it.
Yeah.
And as to one point, and the privacy issue, we are right, a variance is a part of our code to allow for structures to be built, physical structures within areas and sections of a property that they may not otherwise be allowed in. There are recognition that odds are, some lots are oddly shaped and things of that nature. However, one of the findings required for a variance is that it does not have a deleterious impact upon neighboring properties, and one of those impacts is privacy, so that is something that can be considered and addressed as part of the variance, and I think you've already mentioned that you could, you'd be willing to stipulate or add a condition of existing trees, landscaping, it's not Italian Cypress, I hate Italian Cypress, personal opinion, do whatever you want, but, to, to block the views into neighboring properties.
I think one of the other, other point that we should bring up is, he actually bought the, so, the property is two lots, so, he actually owns the next door lot, and there's nothing on it, so.
That's very cool, but, I mean, it has nothing to do with whether the variance is authorized or not, I mean, it's within those setbacks of those lots.
Yeah, but, but then the thing is, then, you know, we're not, 'cause I think one of the biggest reasons is privacy, and, you know, this particular lot has a twenty-two-thousand square foot lot that's not touched, sitting right next to it, so it's actually providing extra buffer to the neighbors versus if it was like a, it was like a ten-foot property that, you know, I understand the concern, but this guy has a, has a whole, whole lot right next to it that creates additional, you know, a hundred feet buffer from the rear and the back.
And I think all the neighbors and the council would love to hear that and see that with the story polls, that would make your point for you very eloquently.
So, Danny, so, I think we need to progress on, I think we have a motion on the table.
If I could repeat my motion is just extend this approval until next month, until the architect can come up with, I mean, talk to the neighbors and come up with the story poll. I am not recommending requesting the owner, I mean, forcing the owner to show up, I think, again, the architect had mentioned multiple times, the owner is a very private person, and he has, I mean, in the application, he has signed the statement allowing the architect to represent him, so I, I feel uncomfortable to force.
No one's forcing him, and that's not a stipulation, I just suggested and asked if he would be willing to come.
I, I would prefer not to.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second to a continuation?
I'll second.
And to clarify the motion, it is for a continuation of this public hearing, it's not an extension of any approval.
To give the architects, whoever, the opportunity to meet with the adjacent homeowners and explain what the, what the plans are, includes storyboard.
Story polls.
Story polls. Again, I'm, it's okay. All right, so, we have a motion and a second. Steve?
Okay, we'll take a verbal vote. I think we're right. Okay, Councilwoman.
Before we do, can we please reiterate the motion that it's not extend the approval, it's extend the...
It's a continuation of the public hearing.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
So, what that allows us to do for clarification is allows us not to have to redo a public notice.
Right.
Thank you.
And the accompanying cost, et cetera. So, excuse me, we'll go with a verbal vote, starting with Councilwoman Miles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wu.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini.
Yes.
Mayor Pitts.
Yes.
So, it is continued until our meeting, which is, oddly enough, the twenty-eighth of March.
Okay, so now, we'll consider our consent calendar, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine or usually enacted by one motion, approving the recommended action list on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the calendar for discussion on a separate action. Council members, are there any items six through twelve that you would like polled?
Seven and eight, please.
Seven and eight. Did you have one? Seven and eight. Okay, so we'll, so we have items number seven and eight pulled from the consent calendar. Can we vote, do I have a motion for the balance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second for six, eight.
No.
Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
So, seven and eight would be the only items that are pulled off. Okay, we ready?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion is to approve the balance of the consent calendar. Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Wu? Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
I'll pass this five-zero.
Okay, let's.
Item number seven.
Number seven? It's really just clarification, because under the committee reports on page eleven of twelve of the minutes, it lists the new director for vector control is Lori Young, and it's Laura, so I just wanted to make sure it was clarified, that the name is Laura, not Lori.
That's, okay. Okay, so we need a motion to approve, motion to approve it.
So moved.
Based on the change?
Based on the change, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu? Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five-zero.
Item number eight.
Okay, so, item number eight is the one where we changed the committee, the LEAT committee, to have it be member and member, and, and I understand that's something that And, um, and I understand that's something that, um, you wanted to be able to have both representation there or two, dual representation, and, and I can agree with that, and I have no, I find no, um, no issue with that. But for the, the amendment to it, the committee consists of two city council members, and not one is listed as being the primary. So that becomes a problem when it's time to give a report or have questions. So I would like to make sure that it, um, goes back to saying that there's a primary and an alternate, not changing that both are there. But that way, there's one person that is going to be the person to report from the, you know, LEAC to the council. And then, um, I love the idea that there's two people there, because if one of them are absent. But I do think for clarification and for, I've had several people, um, who asked me about this particular item, who said, well, who gives a report? And it's like, well, yeah, I don't know who gives a report. So I think we need to clarify that there's still, excuse me, needs to be, um, a primary. And based on that last meeting, we had overwhelming resident support. Um, and I know that it was mentioned both by you and by Councilman Wu about making sure you listen to the residents. We had overwhelming support of making sure that Mayor Protem Rosini is still on LEAC. And I think this is a perfect opportunity to, um, to add both Councilwoman Jones and Mayor Protem Rosini, but make Mayor Protem Rosini the primary, or at least let them decide who's gonna be primary, which it should be, the twenty-year law enforcement officer. But I do think it needs to be amended, that there should still be a primary person, so that way we know who to address our questions and who we're getting the report from.
Well, I would assume, well, okay.
So my motion is to amend that section two to include that there is still a primary, even though there are two members.
So this action as posted addresses the resolution to establish and amend, change the membership. It does not go into the designation of who is the primary and who is not. That's a separate matter, if you will. But what we can do here is we can simply say that on item number, section two, it would be, the committee consists of two city council members, one primary, one alternate.
Perfect.
But that does not then address what you wanted to address, is who those people are. So that can't be, that isn't addressed as part of approval of this, because this is a non-specific.
Right.
Well, that's fine. And, and that's fine. It doesn't have to, we can decide at a separate date, or they can decide amongst each other. And of course, Mayor Protem Rosini won't be here forever, but I think in perpetuity, it needs to be established that there is somebody, that there is somebody here that is going to be the primary, so that way residents know who to address questions to, and we know who we're getting the report from. So that's it.
Well, we voted last time for the two members to be both Rosini and, and, uh,
Yes.
Mayor Protem and for, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Jones to be the designations for that committee.
Yes.
So we shouldn't have to say it's Vince and.
No, that's what I'm saying. Take away the Vince and the Nicole thing, just that there should be someone that's a primary, whether it's these two, whether in four years from now, whatever it is, that the two members are great, but we still need to designate one as the primary, because again, I was asked several times, who's gonna give the report?
Well, why can't they designate in the meetings who'll get the report?
I don't know. I guess the residents, um, voiced their opinions, so, and, and we're, we're talking about making sure we listen to resident input. That was very big, uh, big deal in December and January, so, and they were here in force. There was no opposition to having, um, two members. But I think that everyone was more, at this point in time, satisfied with a primary.
I'm not sure how we want to change this.
So I would change the, if, if the council is so inclined, I would say the county, the section two, and, and it's amended as follows. The committee consists of two city council members, one as a primary, one as an alternate, um, comma, neighborhood watch representatives, supervising sheriff, lieutenant, et cetera. So that first element would be right at adding, inserting after city council members, one is a primary and one is an alternate.
Yep, which is exactly, one to be, one to be designated as the primary, the other's an alternate.
And I also suggest that the LEAC committee appoint who they want to have as primary and who is secondary.
Sure.
Because I've, I, we have, we've already agreed.
That would be just direction to LEAC, separate from the resolution, I would suggest.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
You, you've got the primary and the alternate, which the resolution established, but the, the operating practice would be something that could be.
Let them decide, sure.
And you give direction to LEAC to make that determination.
That's fine.
Okay, so I make the motion.
One point of clarification. You mentioned sheriff lieutenant. Is the language in there still sheriff lieutenant?
Yeah, it's the sheriff department lieutenant would be, yeah.
Just given.
We didn't keep up with the escalation.
Sheriff designation.
So I, 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 if that's a motion, I'll, I'll second that motion.
I would, I would also suggest that we just, for any type of graphical errors or things, we just, you afford the opportunity for us to, to correct, approve as corrected to amend that sort of thing, if there's lieutenant, captain.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we need clarification on what we're voting on?
Everybody clear? You guys good?
I'm good.
Fine, okay.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu? Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, new business. Our first item of new business is support of SB Bill forty-four by Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Miles. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you. I was contacted by both Councilwoman Jones and Councilwoman Miles, and I don't know which in order, but they both contacted me literally the same day, asked the, but sign, that the city could sign a letter of support for SB forty-four. And I said, in order to do that, the city council would have to take action as, as a full body. And so we agendized accordingly for the next council meeting, and I'll defer to them as to the specifics of, of what they're asking.
You wanna go first?
Councilwoman?
Sure, I'll go first. Um, for those who don't know, SB Senate Bill forty-four Alexandra's Law requires that a written advisory or admonishment be issued to a person convicted of a fentanyl-related drug offense, notifying the person of a danger, of the danger of manufacturing and distributing controlled substances, and of potential future criminal liability if another person dies as a result of that person's actions. So in essence, it's putting drug dealers on notice that they can be charged with murder if someone dies, so.
So to supplement that, um, the thing that makes this stand out more so is already, there's federally, if, um, someone who distributes, um, fentanyl or some other narcotic, which I'm not good with all those. But, um, at the federal level, they can already be charged with murder or manslaughter. The problem comes at the state and local level. So I had, um, met with both Assemblyman Chen and, um, on email with Assemblyman Patterson, and then I think, um, Senator Umberg's office contacted both of us and everyone else. But, um, one of the things that's the problem is unless there's a federal DEA task force officer along with some of our local, and there is someone that distributes, and then if I, if I sell you fentanyl and you take it and die, unless there's that federal DEA task force person there, it's not gonna get charged for murder. There'll be other charges, again, I'm ignorant on the law. But at the state level, this is going to allow our local state and local county, uh, law enforcement to be able to charge somebody easier charged, easier access to charging them with murder, should that distribution, sale, possession, whatever, and, and you, you perish from my sale to you. So, so this is just, um, allowing our law enforcement officers easier access to making sure that criminals that, that furnish this and, and their customers die, that they end up getting charged appropriately, and not having to have that federal task force person there. So it's extremely important, especially with what's going on with the border and the kids in school. It's like eighteen to thirty-five year olds are the ones that are hit the most. So this is a crisis in our entire state and our county, something that we, we have to start acting more seriously on.
Yes.
It's an epidemic, and anything we can do to support law enforcement or anything, I know we're not gonna stop it with this, but, but I will tell you, it's, uh, anything that we all can do to, to reduce it and help people, um, I'm all for it, so.
Perfect. And Senator Umberg's office is interested in all cities endorsing this bill.
Okay. Any further comments? Anybody write in, Steve, or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, can we vote?
Councilwoman Miles?
Absolutely, hundred percent yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wu? Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Next item of new business is the advertisement for construction of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three street rehabilitation project. Steve, will you give the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This item will look very familiar. You approved the list, uh, which is included as attached of streets. We're gonna do a street repaving rehabilitation project as part of twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we budgeted accordingly. There's two million dollars budgeted. We're estimating project costs of one point eight. You know, obviously, the bid comeback, it's gotta go out to bid. Uh, we would like to go, have authority to go out to bid at this point, so that our plan is to award the bid prior to school getting out, so that they can be operational when school gets out, and this can be done off school hours as opposed to during school things. So this will allow us to stay on schedule and allows us to go out to bid. Uh, we would have to return to the council with the, uh, award of the contract, but we would anticipate doing that before May, which would allow us to move ahead.
Cool. Council members, any comments?
And I would add, just for clarification, Churchill, Squires, and, um, Dodson are all included.
They're on there.
I'm surprised we didn't.
They're on there.
We didn't have Mrs. Tracy.
I know, just for the record.
Where's Kathy Tracy when, yeah, we need her jumping up and down.
Okay, is there a motion on this matter?
I move.
There's second. Motion and second, let's vote, please.
Council, Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu? Mayor Protem Rosini?
Abstain. I haven't had the opportunity to actually double check to see if I am within the, the distance, because I just noticed there's one on, on Valley there, and the termination point is at Loma, so I'm just gonna abstain from that.
And then Mayor Pitts?
Yes. Our last item of new business is a slur, slurry, I can't say that, slurry seal project list. Staff, will you give the report?
Yes, you'll recall that every year we've started budgeting, uh, there, there's two ways of handling the projects. We do a full street rehabilitation, which takes up two inches of repaving, and we just, you just authorize us to go out to bid on that. We also identify, uh, streets that are not as needy of having the full repave done, but we slurry seal them. We crack seal and then slurry seal on top of them. Uh, those streets have been, uh, those, uh, slurry seal will last about five years, whereas a repaving is ten to fifteen, maybe longer, depending on utilization. So this allows us to take care of some of our streets and get longer use out of them at minimal, there's a significant difference in cost here between a slurry seal and a pavement, obviously because you're just laying a slurry seal on it and crack, sealing cracks beforehand, as opposed to digging up and, and laying the whole thing over. So these are the streets that we've identified. Uh, this is consistent. We have, we have monies in the budget, um, a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, as you can see, a hundred thousand dollars versus a two million dollar rehabilitation project. So there's a significant difference in price, but this will get us some, uh, significant extended use of, of our current roads that are not in dire streets at this point. So we would ask that you allow us to go out to bid with this as well, so again, we can move forward with that, so.
Thank you. Council members, any questions? Okay, uh, do I have a motion?
So the motion would be to approve and allow us to move forward for advertising the bid.
Yes.
Just for clarification.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second? Motion and second?
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Mayor, uh, Council, Councilman Wu? I'm, I mean, to do this verbally is hard. Uh, Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll discuss your city manager report.
Thank you. Uh, real quickly, a couple of things. Um, one, if you've noticed, the little white cars driving around are now, uh, electric cars. They replaced sedans. Those are our city engineer and our building inspector and our code enforcement officer. So if you see them driving around, uh, you'll, you'll notice those. They're, they're electric cars, and they were paid for by AQMD money. They're fully installed and operational. Uh, number two, we are fully engaged with HCD in responding to their most recent set of questions. It would be our hope to be able to respond to them by the end of March and move forward on that. So, uh, just for those people who are asking, HCD responded on Valentine's Day with their most recent, uh, set of additional questions they asked in clarifications, uh, to our housing element. Uh, we're, we're working diligently on it. We've had multiple conversations, and we believe that, uh, we'll be able to satisfy their requirement, at least in our eyes, this next time round, and that would be, uh, by the end of March. Subsequently, uh, if we get some verbal approval, uh, we will return to the council, because the council would have to formally adopt the revised housing element with all the narrative changes that have been required over our four or five different submittals. So, um, with just that sort of that, and I'm available for any other questions.
Should we question?
Oh, and I would lastly be cautious. We've had a number of rain. If you walk outside City Hall, you'll see a tree that has fallen over. Uh, with the winds and things that are happening, I would just caution people to be careful when they're on their walks and things, because there was an incident where someone in Anaheim was, a tree fell on her while she was in a car. And, um, I believe. She was killed. So, uh, it is, the, the soil does not hold some of these trees very well anymore. So we've had a tremendous amount of rain and things, so I would just caution people to be a little more alert and when the inclement weather, and if they could just look up every now and then and not, and be observant of their, of their areas. That's, that's a big deal.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just one, one more thing I'd like to add. It's been another year. It's passed, and we've had the opportunity to sit down and talk to you a little bit about things going on here in the city as a council, and how much we really do appreciate all the things that you do for our city. You, you're an amazing asset, resource, uh, person, um, and we, we just, we think the world of you and really do appreciate everything you do for the city, for the staff, and for everyone here. And we want to thank you, uh, again, for your service to this community and look forward to a longstanding relationship with you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for council member meeting attendance reports. Orange County, uh, mosquito and vector control.
So at our February board meeting, it's kind of, um, the new people come, and, um, there's a, the habit truck is there, and they make a pretty big deal out of it. And so, uh, there's usually two presentations, and if you've been there a while, you've seen them twice. But one was, um, kind of a year in review, the seven, past seventy-five years, which was really cool, actually. And then the other one is, um, more like a Brown Act refresher on, on, for the new trustees. As part of the business, um, we approved, and that was Laura Young's first official meeting as Rick Howard now officially, officially has retired. And so, um, we kind of were able to honor him as well. But, so, um, the board of trustees approved a, um, labor contract between Orange County Mosquito Vector Control District Employee Association and the district. And, um, the labor contract is a three-year contract, and I have to say that, um, full disclosure, there were items in this contract that I could get behind and support, and then there was a couple of items that I couldn't. And so the item did pass. It's a one point one million dollar increase over the next three years. I was, um, not in support of this, uh, but I was in the minority, so that did pass. Some of the outreach talking points, uh, with the heavy rains and cooler weather, many areas of Southern California have these blooming flowers, and a lot of residents are taking opportunities to go on these walks and beautiful trails and see the wildflowers, but they're cautioning, um, about ticks. So even though it's really cold, ticks are, you know, very high, high, high tick season. And even though it's beautiful and, and fragrant and flowers, and you need to wear long clothing, clothing and or, um, tick repellent, and to be very careful about that. Right now, the mosquitoes are not out, uh, but they will be, especially with all this, this, um, water and once it gets warmer. So again, just tip, toss, take action, and that's it.
Thank you. Orange County Sanitation District, that's me. Probably didn't know what I was signing up for when I got, when I took on this role. I think there were six meetings in the last month that I've attended. I will, I'm pleased to say that, uh, we have a new general manager for the sanitation district. His name is Rob Thompson. He started on February the tenth. Uh, Jim Hedberg, Herberg, uh, retired. As of February the ninth, he had thirty years of service with OC Sand, and we did a lot to, uh, uh, over, we spent probably two hours on one meeting, just thanking him and giving him all the accolades and so forth. But, uh, I'm, I've met with Rob, and he is, he's a very smart guy and will do a lot. And I'm absolutely amazed at what sanitation does. You know, I didn't, I didn't have a clear view of that until I actually got involved and, and we've gone through, I think, the Councilman Wu and I have gone through two training sessions so far and have tours coming up pretty soon, so we'll, uh, uh, be doing that. The great part is we'll now be in-person meetings going forward, starting in March. Everything we've been doing is over Zoom, so with the governor's new rule and so forth, we can now go back to, uh, uh, back to in-person meetings. The one thing I would do want to bring. The one thing I would do want to bring up to the council and to the to the members of the Villa Park community. They have their first reading of a sewer service charge upgrade that's coming up. I have to say, you know, they do their budgets five years in, you know, in the future. They do have some increased costs that they're fighting with, but they but in order to continue the levels of service that they want, they're asking for an increase in price. It's three and a half percent over the course of the next five years. To put that into perspective, three and a half percent is $11 to the consumer over in a year's time. So it's it doesn't seem like a lot, but when you spread that across 550,000 users, it's sizable money that'll go a long ways to help, you know, with retrofits. They have an aging system and so forth that they've got to take care of and so forth. So just be aware of that. There were letters sent out to the 550,000 people in the community, so you should have received something. Hopefully, let you know what's going on. But the first reading will take place this month and then they'll have a subsequent reading after that before anything is passed. I was added to the administrative committee for the sanitation district. So not only do I attend the board meeting once a month, but I also have the administrative committee that I have to attend as well and do that. And I appreciate Councilman Wu's backup in case something happens. So that's my report. Orange County Fire Authority.
I like you. Boy, quite a few meetings between January and the very end of January and February. It's been extremely busy. We had the general meeting of the Board of Directors for Orange County Fire Authority on January 26. And among the topics was the election of chair and vice chair. And I am very honored and humbled to say that I was elected as vice chair to the fire authority. Obviously, contractual issues have been going on. That's something that anybody that's in public service, that's in the first responder world, or that's a member of the Orange County Employees Association is aware of. Can't really talk about those because those are still going on. They're still pending. Financially, the fire authority is in a very good situation. The snowball plan that they put in place years ago to save money has saved millions of dollars in interest and put us in a position where we are really, really well-funded. And as taxpayers, we really should appreciate that. On February 8, I attended the Budget Finance Committee where we got more good news about the current situation with property taxes as well as the financial stability of the fire authority. Obviously, the overall economic outlook is a little unclear with record inflation and obviously, a lot of other unsavory economic factors that are looming, potential for unemployment going up and other issues facing us. So kind of a to-be-determined on that. On February 23, I attended, again, the general board meeting of the Board of Directors as well as executive meeting, the executive committee meeting, which now I'm a part of. And primarily, the focus was contract negotiations in closed session. There were some other issues that were discussed, but in the interest of brevity and time, I'm happy to talk offline. Anybody wants to know more about the agenda. And that's basically what I got.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Careful what you ask for.
Yeah, believe me. Thank you.
Okay, Orange County Library Advisory Board, that's me. No meeting. Orange County Unified School District, City Schools?
There is no meeting, but I do have a couple of items for school news. So it was really nice to see community members show up for the Villa Park High School showcase at the beginning of the month. And a lot of our residents toured the new science building over at Villa Park High School. So if you're watching and you haven't had a chance to tour the building and you'd like to, there will be another opportunity at Open House in April. So I just wanted to let the residents know that. And the driveway to the Villa Park High School parking lot that is by the track off of Santiago will now be exit only starting March 6. So they're doing some construction along there. And so they're anticipating three weeks, but depending on how the traffic flows, it could be a permanent change. So if you have any input, that's not the city, it's the school district, but you can always let them know. But I just wanted residents to be aware of the change in traffic pattern and for those of you who drop off your kids back there.
So just for clarification, the construction they're doing is to put in some drain pipe that will extend all the way down, which will eliminate hopefully the flooding that happens in the parking lot here when it rains. So we're aware of what they're doing and that's sort of is a follow-up. It's we definitely appreciate them putting in the pipe.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Law enforcement advisory. Who wants to give the report?
We had already arranged that.
Thank you. I'm honored again to provide the report. I'm thankful for Councilwoman Jones for attending the meeting and obviously the current and former law enforcement colleagues as well as the chief of police services for the sheriff's department that attended here.
The meeting took place on February 8. And of the topics of significance, we obviously went over crime statistics. Overall, Villa Park is in a really good situation. We're very blessed here. Orange County as a whole and the state of California, a lot less fortunate. And that's through no fault of the sheriff's department. Their hands are very much tied by our state legislature and propositions, 47 and 57, and AB 109 that allowed the early release of prisoners and obviously the lessening of penalties. Sheriff's Department is doing a fantastic job. We should be very thankful to have Don Barnes as our sheriff as well as obviously Captain Neutzen and his deputies. The traffic patrol and enforcement that we have, it's making a difference. The motor that we're contracting for on overtime is really doing a fantastic job. The surprise effect, the different locations, it's preventing, even though we heard eight different traffic collisions occurred, and that's perhaps an increase in numbers. Overall, it could be much worse, I assure you, if the enforcement was not there. That's based upon 18 years of doing the job. With respect to Neighborhood Watch, there are up to 212 participants in the program, which is excellent. And then new items that we discussed were the possibility of viability as well as cost of license plate readers being installed around the city as a mechanism to deter criminals as well as to aid in the apprehension of these individuals that are involved in various crimes throughout Orange County and in particular, the high-value residential burglaries that we've seen a huge increase in. These license plate readers are something that have stirred some controversy within our community in the past, and that was addressed and discussed as far as privacy. But I assure you, having used the systems, both of which, Flock and Vigilant, it's not something where you're seeing necessarily inside the car and who's driving in the car. It's the license plate. It's the make and the model and the color of the vehicle. I value my privacy. I value my family's privacy, but this is an instrumental tool. And I think we're going to hear more about that in future meetings. SB 44, the fentanyl support. I want to thank Councilwoman Miles as well as Councilwoman Jones. Fantastic leadership by Tom Umberg and really trying to, excuse me, make our city a much safer city in our community and the county at large as well as the state. It's an epidemic and it's killed thousands of people. And we're importing it on a daily basis across our southern border. We need to do something about it here locally and obviously hopefully our elected leaders on a national level. Went over some crime prevention measures and that's basically about it. Those are the high points. Thanks.
I have a comment for Mayor Potem. There's several business owners, I think, caught wind that you guys were discussing the license plate readers, and three of them have asked that if needed, they would be more than happy to write letters of support.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. I think I want to echo the sentiments of the mayor. He said the more cameras we have, the better with the Ring doorbell cameras, the other home cameras that we have. They're really an incredibly valuable tool in solving and preventing crimes. It's a massive deterrent, not to mention having two German Shepherds in the house is a good thing, too.
Could you do me a favor and maybe take this before the Leak for consideration, too, as well? Not necessarily in lieu of the license plate readers, but maybe we can put together some incentives, you know, financial incentives to help support additional cameras at people's residences to help with that effort of, you know, catching someone doing something they're not supposed to do. So maybe that's a consideration you all might want to take up.
Certainly, it will be discussed.
Well, I thought that our city manager had mentioned something about some cities.
Some cities have actually gone out and purchased rings and given them to residents, first come, first served to residents. And you can get a discounted rate because you buy them at volume. So I know that I was just in the city of, I'm going to get it wrong, so I'm not going to say which city. Anyway, they gave out between 300 to 500 rings to individual houses and they offered to install them in people's houses for those who might have trouble. And that they did actually before they put license plate readers in and that sort of like bridged the gap and people were more comfortable with cameras. And they got the idea accustomed to, okay, there's cameras. It's not a bad thing. And then they moved forward with the license plate readers as a second thing. But it's just a there's food for thought that that's different cities are approaching differently.
One thing I do want to mention, actually, forgot momentarily, was that I did speak with representatives from other cities. Locally, Yor Belinda is having them installed and nothing but rave reviews. Spoke with Jean Hernandez on that. And then from Los Alamitos, Shelley Hasselbrink. And they're very impressed and they're having a fantastic effect on a reduction in crime. And in Los Alamitos's case, they're right on the border of LA County, which I hate to say it. That's where a lot of our criminal activity is coming from. And that's not my conjecture. That's fact. So I appreciate their comments and I appreciate your comments and we'll look forward to any suggestions you might have.
And Mayor, just on that point, you mentioned Yor Belinda. Yeah, we approved that maybe a month ago, the Flock cameras, which is one of the license reader ones. So if you're interested about it, we wrote the staff report. I wrote the agreement. You can check it out, what it all does, what it doesn't do, right? As far because obviously Yor Belinda was freaked out about privacy as well. So there's a lot of protections in place in that regard.
And did they pass that already?
I believe so. Just a month ago.
Was it unanimous or was it split? Do you know? Do you remember?
It was unanimous.
Thanks.
Okay. Fund side of the city. Foundation. What's coming up that's fun?
Well, before I mention what's coming up will be fun, but I would like to, the foundation would like to give their thanks to Brendan, representing House Representative Kim Yeon was being there and also Janet, Representative Fund Assemblyman Philip Chan. Both of them gave the foundation and various partnership to put on Lunar New Year certificates. So we really appreciate that. Moving right along to what's fun, what's coming up would be there are three Iranian family gathering together to put on Nourros, which is Persian New Year that will be coming on Sunday, I mean, I'm sorry, Saturday, March 25, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00, 5:00 p.m. And the other thing that will be coming up will be Earth Day, April 22, from 8:00 to 12:00, Clean Street of Villa Park. And most importantly, for all residents who have been collecting electronic scraps at home or garage, this is a perfect time for you to take them out to VP. There will be a collection there for the e-scrap collection. And also, there's a possibility, I believe, will be if have a lot of document that you want to be shredded, you can bring that also. And then the usual will be the they are already planning for 4th July, concert in the 4th July parade and also concert in the park. There's a they are foundation is talking about possibly to have Easter egg festival. The day will be April 15. The location is not locked yet, but they do plan to bring that in as a new event. And outside of that, they are just putting out new flyer that we already seeing, a banner, I'm sorry, the banner that we already seeing locally. And we also just approved new members to be on the foundation. So they have new representatives with new ideas. So it's quite interesting to watch. Thank you.
We stole all of you from there. Me, you, you, all of us except for Vince, I think, were stolen. So we had to shuffle around.
A question. Have you guys discussed about Winter Wonderland?
The budget will be coming up next month.
Okay, because if you remember before your time, this council last year had and through public input, had kind of said they didn't think that the city should pay for it anymore. And so last year, we came up with an agreement that the city would put forth 7,500 and then foundation would do 5,000. And so I just and then with the understanding that the foundation would take it over after that. So the city's obligation would no longer be there financially. So I just want to check and make sure and see, you know, what you guys were communicating on that and if you were going to have it. Hopefully, you are. It's, you know, it was very well attended. It was in the register. We had three times as many people this last year as we did the first year. So the bones are there and set rolling. And if you don't find that you have the funds for it, I certainly hope that there's a part of it that you guys can do, if not the whole thing, so.
Could I just clarify something? Because I was treasurer for the foundation last year when we discussed this. And there was no commitment from the foundation to take it over in full. Because the foundation is very concerned about, and I can't speak for them right now, but a year ago, when we were going through the budget process, they were very concerned about the expense.
Right.
So that's why we only made, and it was a $5,500.
$5,500, right?
Yeah, contribution.
I think it was, like I said, it was the understanding that that it would then be the foundation's, not that it was a commitment. It was just an understanding. So we'll see. We'll see. So hopefully, there's room in the budget and if there, at least for some part, but probably putting the cart before the horse.
Well, I will certainly report that to the foundation.
That would be great.
Unfortunately, beyond the council, I have no vote. So I just want to mention that it's not up to me 100% at all.
Actually, you do. You do have a vote.
Not sure that's.
Yeah, that is. When we did the, yeah, because I helped with the bylaws. The council liaison has a vote. Steve Franks does not have a vote. So I can clarify that with the secretary who calls the roll. But yes, the council person has the vote. And I can provide you the bylaws if you'd like.
Okay. Housing Legislative Committee?
No meeting.
No meeting. Bridges?
No meeting.
Senior citizens?
So senior citizens, we had a meeting. Again, it was kind of this whole, because you have some of the new appointees and whatnot. So there was a very broad presentation on all the different services that the Office on Aging and the Orange County Community Services offer, so that's some of the new members. And we can put this online, but it runs the gamut of, again, all for seniors. And we're starting to call them older persons, not senior citizens. Seems to be the preferred language. But everything from the senior non-medical emergency transportation programs to elder abuse prevention, to dignity at home, fall prevention, even residential repairs. There's programs for that. If you're a senior that lives at home and there's some minor repairs, the Office on Aging, Orange County Community Services, they have free repairs. It's not going to, you know, re-pipe your house, but if you have a leaky faucet or if you have, you know, a toilet that won't stop running. Also, they have nutritionists and programs where you can call and get very good advice on nutrition, adult daycare, perhaps, and even some legal services. So really encourage any of our seniors that might have a question or need some sort of assistance to call either the Office on Aging or and/or the Orange County Community Services. And I can put this, we can put this, a link on our website that has a description and a rundown of every single thing. That's it.
Thank you. Now we'll hear individual council member information or items you'd like to, I brought up previously, but you'd like to speak to. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you. I attended a Critical Incident Preparedness Forum that was hosted by the Association of California Cities, Orange County. And while we certainly hope we will never have to use the information that was presented, it was extremely reassuring to see how prepared Orange County is for any crisis. The panels were excellent and I have consistently been impressed with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and the breadth of what they offer. Department and the breadth of what they offer to Villa Park and the county as a whole. So please pass along our thanks to Sheriff Barnes and to Carrie Braun for their great presentations. We really enjoyed it, it was a very valuable training. So that's my report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mile?
Nope, I think it's time.
I attend the same meeting as Councilwoman Jones. Fantastic. I learned lots. I, I didn't expect it, but also make me worry. So I don't know whether that's good or not, but I, I do enjoy it. I really appreciate it. And I'm looking forward for the open house, for fire house. So that will be awesome. Thank you.
Mayor Potem. Mayor Potem.
Thank you. I'll make this short. I attended the crime prevention meeting on February 16th with many of you, if not all of you here. And I, I want to thank Captain Newtons for putting that on and obviously Sarah Chivrani for, she, she did an amazing job and I've worked with her professionally. She knocks it out of the park every single time. So thank you very much and thank you for all the residents that came that showed interest and those of you that tuned in online. I know there was another event within Villa Park at the same time and there was a bit of a conflict, but great event, really appreciate it. Looking forward to the opening day of Villa Park Little League here soon and was able to, and was fortunate to attend Villa Park High School baseball game the other day. They've got some fantastic ballplayers and coaches. So thank you.
Just what, real quickly, just for those who are watching, I would not park on the red zones on Serrano because the sheriff will be enforcing parking tickets. So I just, as a caution, as we start Little League season, we, I talked to the director. And the other thing, the school districts asked us to make sure that they do enforce the dogs and cleaning up after dogs on the fields because that's sort of a problem. So best of luck to the Little League, but I just wanted to pass those along to the people who are watching.
Thank you. For me, I attended the City Selection Committee meeting on February the 9th. There were two positions that I voted on behalf of Villa Park. It was a LAFCO representative and OC Parks Commission. It's interesting, the LAFCO primary position, we voted four times and there was a tie each time. So we did not actually select someone. We did select the alternative, who's Carol Moore from Laguna Woods. And the OC Parks representative is Eric Wiegand from Newport Beach. Let's see, February the 10th, I attended Don Wagner's reelection announcement. Congratulations to Don, looking forward to his campaign. It was quite, quite an event. We had a lot of elected leaders around and Pat was taking pictures and so forth. On February the 19th, I met with members of the Troop 850 to discuss the role of city government. I have to say, those, those kids put me through the wringer. Some of those scouts had some very creative ideas about how we should run the city and what we should do with our sewers and things like that, but it was a very interesting thing. The city, city staff hosted, along with myself, Serrano Elementary School students this month. We discussed the roles of city leaders and the various departments and so forth. We had three classes come through and this Friday, we have three more classes come through. So you're welcome to, to come and join us and as we meet with those young folks and, and give them an idea what we, I actually brought them up here and sent them at the dais and talked about each one of the roles and what we do and they got a kick out of it. Your deputies had an opportunity to talk about what you all do. All they wanted to do is ride around in a police car. That's all those of them wanted to do, so. But it was a busy month, but I enjoyed it, it was fun. And so thank you all for your reports. I guess we'll adjourn the meeting until the next meeting on March 20, March 28th. Thank you all for attending.